Good evening. I'd like to call our November 1st, 2016 City Commission Meeting to order. Let us stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda are announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening? If not, we will move to our consent agenda.
And that would consist of the approval of the minutes from the October 4th, 2016 meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Agreed.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, it is approved. And now we move on to our new business, the first being Resolution Number R-118-16.
An emergency resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with De Clara Technologies Incorporated, excuse me, LLC, to install an advanced meter infrastructure for the water, wastewater, and electric utilities.
I will call on Mr. Berger to give the staff report tonight.
Thank you. I've got a quick PowerPoint presentation I hope everyone can look at. It's really a version of the presentation you saw at the workshop we had several months ago and what we took to the Energy Board. It's about the AMI project. Again, this is a slide that really shows the evolution of AMI. It starts with 1970, kind of where we're at today with the going out there and actually reading the meters with meter readers. It evolves from 1980. They developed a drive-by system. Ninety-nine, they did an AMR system. Two thousand, they implemented an AMI system. And really since then, they're on to their second generation of AMI. So it's progressed a lot. There's a lot of utilities out there. It's on the second generation. It's a very, very stable platform. And so why are we going with AMI? In 2016, the city was awarded a grant to cover the cost of replacing new water meters in the Southview neighborhood. That's about 1,300 water meters. And we felt the city at that point was really the catalyst to bring this project to light. And the water, wastewater, electric utilities have all been looking at this project for years. And it's really, a really good opportunity for us to go and move on to this project. And really, one of the biggest things is safety concerns that we have through, you know, our meter readers now have to deal with dogs. They have to go into people's homes, basements. And, you know, there's also threats during nonpays and whatnot. So this will mitigate that risk there. There's a lot of benefits to an AMI system, not only for the wastewater, water department, electric department, for our internal operations, but also for the citizens. Some of those are listed there with leak detection, increased electrical reliability, reduces the bill estimate, estimates to get more accurate billing. And, you know, there's future customer enhancements programs, like Customer Portal, stuff that we plan on deploying in the future. So where does the city go with their RFP? You know, once we figured out we had the grant in place, the city formed a committee of all the different departments. We brought in Power System Engineering, Inc., to help us with the procurement process. And really developed an RFP around two different areas. The first area, or the first phase, we call it, is that initial grant area. And we broke it down to two different sections. Phase 1A is just the water meters. Phase 2, Phase 1B is the electric meters. Once we fully deploy this, we call it a pilot area, we do a system acceptance test. This will evaluate the systems, make sure that what we deployed is up to par where they promised us during the RFP. And once we're happy with that system acceptance test, Phase 2 is really deploying the rest of the city. And so our, based off the RFP, we got seven different responses from it. You can see the list there. We, the city and PSC really sat down, used 139 separate AMI requirements and developed a waiting score matrix. And based on all the evaluation, we narrowed it down to three different vendors. Three different vendors were Clara, Eaton Cooper, EJP, and Census. After that, we brought each one of those vendors in for a one-day presentation, and we really fully vetted their RFP. The city really liked Clara at that point. We went out and checked the references. We were highly satisfied with the five different cities that we called and talked about their product. And based on the raw score, the onsite presentations, the RFP responses, and the reference checks, we felt Clara is really the clear top choice to best fit Pickwa's current and future needs. Some of the things that we really liked about Clara was that they only have four different base stations, so there's only four different points on the system that we really have to maintain, make sure they're up and running. They promised us a 99.5% on-demand read, a 100% three-day billing read commitment. They fully support the GE meter line, which is the meter of choice for the electric department. And they support multiple residential and commercial water meters as well. One of the, really the highlights of the presentations we got out of Clara was the deployment. They're bringing a group called Smart Grid Solutions. You can see what their portfolio is there, different utilities they've used and they've implemented throughout the years. I think they said at one point, they implemented over 5 million different points. So they're very experienced. They train their employees really well. They have a very good safety record. And we feel like they are really the top choice in terms of deployment for us. This project really consists of the next four resolutions. This resolution, the following two are for water meters. We decided to pull the water meters out of the initial RFP. And the following one is the project management for the implementation.
Alright, thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, I have one or two. The age of the current meters, when would they be due to be replaced independent of this? I mean, if we weren't going with this, would they need to be replaced in near future?
I can speak on the electric side at least. We've actually been purchasing used residential meters in anticipation of going to this project. Most of them are close to their life, so they're ready to be replaced.
So we would be, at some point, replacing these whether we did this or not, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so that would be a large percentage of the cost we're talking tonight, anyway?
Right, correct.
Then the other question was on the benefit of leak detection, the way I'm, you can tell me more, but the way I understand it is, they will be, let's say a home has a leak currently, if we have a leak and the resident doesn't know about it, it runs and runs and runs, and then within the 30-day cycle, we go to read it, we have a high reading, let's say, on the water, for example. How would this detect that sooner? Is it a continuous monitoring, or how does that work exactly?
Yeah, so the system actually pulls in points on, you know, the interval that we specify. So let's say we just pulled in a daily point. What it can do is compare the usage from the previous day. If there's a peak on that day, there's analytics in the software that say, hey, this meter is showing a really large usage over the past day. You maybe should check it, call them, see if there's anything running.
That was one of the real positives of being proactive, of being able to detect high water meter usage to alert the customer that there might be something wrong. So it's a great benefit from that standpoint.
And in the same way with electric, then? If there's a really big peak, we would, what would we then, call them or something to find out if they're filling their pool, or they're having an 80-foot Santa, their lighting, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we'd investigate it more to see if there's a cause of it.
Yeah, and a lot of people do get mad when they have a leak or something they're not aware, and all of a sudden their bill is double because this will hopefully eliminate some of that. Yeah, okay. Alright, thanks.
Then start to finish, just in the Southview area that we're going to concentrate on. How long do we think it's going to take to get this system up and running?
So the Phase 1A has to be completed by August, according to our grant. Though speaking with Clara, we actually have some representatives from Clara here, they may be able to feel a little better, but they feel that there's no problem implementing that before the August deadline for Phase 1. And then we are estimating between 12 to 18 months to finish Phase 2, so the end of 2018. But it could accelerate just based on what their timeline is, once we get the meters on board.
So just the water meters will go online first? Is that correct?
Yep. The completion of Phase 1 would be both water and electric. But they plan on installing the water meters first, just to fulfill the grant requirements. But after we put the water meters in, we'll install the electric meters, and then that's where we do the system acceptance test.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had one other question, I'm sorry. When we, when we go to the home to replace a meter, about how long will that take? And will we, is that going to be a real timely thing to do that?
Yeah, Jim, I don't know, do you want to comment on that, or?
For electric.
Come up to the podium. To the podium, please. That's okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
For electric, it's a five-minute process. For water meters, 10 to 15 minutes tops.
Okay. So you anticipate we would leave them a note, tell them when we're coming, or call them, or how is that all going to work?
Yeah, for an indoor meter set, so we have to come into your home and change a water meter, we would schedule an appointment as best we can ahead of time, work with the homeowner to get inside. If someone was changing a meter outside, electric meter, we would try to knock on the door, let them know that there would be a brief outage. If they don't answer, we'll go ahead and change it and leave a door hanger, and let them know work was done. It's pretty.
Okay. And we'll be aware of anyone that has any kind of medical equipment that would be affected and all those things?
Yeah, life support, medical needs, we set appointments for, so that they're not disrupted.
And then if there is an indoor water meter, an basement water meter presently, that will remain in the basement. It won't be installed at the doors?
Correct.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
We'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have it seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number R-118-16 passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-119-16.
An emergency resolution, excuse me, authorizing a purchase order to Mueller Systems, LLC, for the purchase of water meters for the city of Pickwa.
Mr. Freisteller will provide the staff report.
Yes, good evening. We are looking at doing a complete water meter replacement. Many of our meters we have are quite old. And during doing a process of doing automated meter reading, if we have older equipment, it will not give any more accurate results than what the meters are capable of delivering. We are looking at using a composite meter at this time versus the old brass meters we used to have. With all the new regulations for no lead, we felt it was a wise choice to go with a composite meter, and there's no chance of having the lead in that meter. The meter we selected has stainless steel threads on the ends of the meters. When you're connecting them to brass nuts on both ends of the meters, it makes them much more forgiving than if you were screwing them onto a composite thread. It makes it good for our installers as we're current doing the big change-out. Also, our service people, as we move forward to maintain this system in the long term, the stainless steel threads will be very much easier to work with than what a composite thread would be. Again, we'll start with the Phase 1 section, and that will all be, all those meters will be replaced. And there is going to be public notification prior to the program starting. The people will be notified as we go to the installation. Our installers, trucks will all be identified, as well as their carry identification with them as we go forward with the program. All the meters up to the 2-inch size meters will be Hershey meters. We called three communities that use Hershey meters. As I spoke with all their people, they were very favorable, and some of them had been through the generations of the meters prior to the stainless steel threads. And talking to one of the installers, he says it's the stainless steel threads have made all the difference in the world. So it was very much a huge improvement as they moved forward through the different generations of the meters.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm reading ahead on this agenda. Why are we buying meters from two different places?
We're utilizing, the next ones I'll be referring to are the industrial, commercial industrial meters. When it comes to those meters, the composite small meters like we use in residences won't work. A meter of the size that we're going to with the Census meter will measure up to just a quarter of a gallon of usage. Both Hershey and Badger and other companies that we interviewed said when it came to that meter, or that size meters, theirs couldn't compete with the accuracy that the Census meter has.
How often are we going to need to read in sub-gallon measurements?
I'm sorry?
How often are we going to need to read the water meter for one quart?
The, at a large industry, they have a number of different things that use low volumes of water, and the range is so, so large between slow flows and high flows that a meter such as Census is much more accurate and keeps us getting paid for all the gallons that we're utilizing.
So does that mean that the other meters aren't accurate?
The meters that we are putting in residences are very adequate because there's not a very large variance in the flow that it has to read. And so they're very good for a residential meter. When we move into industrial, it has to be of a more accurate level because of the variances in the flows.
Alright. I noticed that the lowest-priced option was not picked, and there was no reason given for that. Can you address that?
The biggest reason for that was that all the other options in the composite meter did not have stainless steel threads. And that makes a huge difference when it comes to the installation and long-term maintaining of your system.
So that was in the spec? That was in the spec, the threads?
We, we didn't specify stainless steel, but it, what happened was, as we went through and got all the composite meters, it gets very difficult. If you say, we only want meters with stainless steel threads, then you've eliminated any other competition. So as we move forward, we found that that was a real benefit to us and decided that it was a, it was a factor that we felt was worth the difference in the cost.
And the lower-cost company did not have that option, correct?
They did not.
Okay.
Are those stainless steel threads, are they molded into the meter? Or are they put in sort of similar to a keen insert or helicoid-type process?
I'm sorry, Mr. Vogt, I don't know just exactly how that meter is built, but it has to be an extremely well-built unit, or it would leak all the time.
I realize that, but I under, I see that the composite threads would not be near as strong as the stainless threads, and I imagine these companies had problems with them pulling. And so they put the stainless, and I just want to know if the stainless was actually molded into the composite? Or do they put a thread in it, then they put an insert in it?
I would say it's, once, looking at that, it is molded into the actual unit.
Alright. Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to adopt Resolution R-119-16.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number R-119-16 passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-120-16.
An emergency resolution authorizing a purchase order to Everett J. Prescott, Incorporated, for the purchase of water meters for the city of Pickwa.
Mr. Freisteller.
Yes, this would be the balance of the meters that are 2 inches and above. They are, this meter, as I said, was selected because of its accuracy. It's, it has been a meter of choice from the, for the underground utilities department for a number of years, and they have been extremely satisfied with the performance of this meter. Therefore, we decided and wish to continue with the usage of this Omni Census meter.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Again, this is a higher-cost item, and there's no explanation in here why. So the cost is worth it? I mean, it's quite a bit of a more expensive than most of the other options. I mean, if you compare it dollar-wise, I, tell me again why it's better to spend the extra money?
Yes. Again, it comes to the reliability and the accuracy of that meter, and the measuring various flows. And when I, when we interviewed other metering companies, and we asked them what meter they had that could give us the accuracy and reliability of the Census meter, both representatives said they had not a meter in the price range that the Omni was, that they could even put up against that meter for its performance.
So this is the only one that met the spec? I guess I'm getting back to that because if these do not, others do not meet the spec, they ought to be noted as such. You know what I mean?
Okay. I guess.
I assume these are all meeting spec because they're listed. Apparently, they're not because they aren't accurate enough, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're talking about these for the commercial meters?
That is correct. There's somewhere around 800 of those units that we will be putting in total. Some of the units are, we won't have to replace as they've just been within the last five years, but anything older than that, we will be replacing with a new meter.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Do we have any questions or comments from our public? If not, I will entertain a motion for this resolution.
I move to adopt Resolution Number R-120-16.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number R-120-16 passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-121-16.
An emergency resolution acquiring the services of Power System Engineering, Incorporated, to provide professional services for the city of Pickwa.
We go back to Mr. Berger.
Thank you. So this resolution will allow us to bring Power Service, or Power System Engineering to help implement the, and project management of the AMI project. So PSC has been involved with this project through your procurement. The power system has used PSC in the past with our technology work plan. They really have an intimate knowledge of our system. And this project is a very, very big project. It's complexed. It's over multiple different departments and dealing with the vendors. So we feel like project management is a key part to this. And one of the big factors, too, is that it's going to help us develop and redefine some core business processes that are, that will be changed due to bringing in the AMI project. So it'll help us really define our next policies, procedures, once we, once we get the AMI system deployed.
Thank you. Any question?
Why was this not bid out?
We kind of use this as a sole source. We, like I said, Power System Engineering really has an intimate knowledge of this. They have the expertise. There's really not a lot of companies out there that do this. There's a handful, and we felt like they knew our system, and we were very comfortable in with what they provided.
But without bidding it, there's no competition. They can give you whatever bid they want to because you're not having somebody that's bidding against them.
Right, they, I mean, they based the price on this was an hourly cost, similar to all our other projects that we've used with them. And it's a not-to-exceed price, so they'll only charge what the hourly rate that they'll have on is.
But how do you know that another company couldn't do the same job and it costs less?
Generally, what we find is the new consultants have to spend so much extra time learning the system and getting up to speed, that it pays to continue the work or the project with a consultant who has been on the project. And I think in the long run, it ultimately would be a cost savings force.
You talk about putting all brand-new meters in. What do they have to get up to speed on? Any company that can, can do that work, that does the same thing as they do, they don't have to get up to speed on anything because everything's new. Also, most of theirs is going to be electronic and computer work.
Well, just responding to your question, so that was the rationale behind trying to stay with a company who's been with us for, through the project.
Yeah, but that doesn't make it right. Did you do a, before you got this cost, do you have any kind of estimate in mind that you thought it would be to compare to? In other words, does this seem like a reasonable amount, or high or low, or?
It was, it was online with our, you know, technology work plan, with their process of coming in to help with procurement. So it didn't stand out at all for us, that it was all was high or anything.
You remember if we had a, normally we have an estimate going into these things. Did you have an estimate of what this would be?
We didn't put together an estimate on this type of.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Let's go move.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call for this resolution, please?
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Nay.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number R-121-16 passes. And now we move on to Resolution Number R-122-16.
A resolution to enter into a contract with EMHNT for the development of the Underground Utilities GIS Pilot Project.
Mr. Johnson will provide the staff report.
Good evening, everyone. The Underground Utilities Division for the city is seeking to develop a comprehensive mapping system for all the underground utilities that can operate in a cohesive GIS database. Currently, we already have an established stormwater mapping system, but the city is in need of the same layers for the water distribution system and the wastewater collection system. The overall project would be phased, but this portion of the, of the project is considered a pilot. It will consist of roughly 20 downtown blocks ranging from North Street to Wood Street, and from Downing Street to Spring. and Downing Street to Spring. The pilot will consist of all data points collected for the underground utilities, and the end product will be a fully functional GIS map for that the whole city can use eventually. And once that is complete, the rest of the city will be phased in into sections for completion. And that'll be basically at the end of the project, able to be for corporation limits and all of that. EMH&amp;T was chosen by an RFP selection. We reached out to four firms, and, you know, we had them come in, and they did demos for us, showed us their product, basically gave us the end result of where it's going to be at, and EMH&amp;T stood out above everyone else. And I would like to introduce Derek Meyer here, he's from EMH&amp;T tonight, to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Yes. First of all, you said we're going to be getting data points. Explain what that is. Also, once we have a full map, how will we use that? What will be the benefit of it for having a map with all the data points?
A data point? Would you like to answer that, Derek?
Good evening, commissioners. So the data points are just an accurate representation of all the different facilities and infrastructure you have out there, whether it's manholes or catch basins or all the main line features. And some of the real benefits of GIS are, I would classify it into three different areas, kind of the least of which is just more transparency. So if people want to know where these facilities are, the GIS can help them see those. There are some operational efficiencies. It's going to be available in offices, in the field, in trucks, so that while people, while your crews are out there, they can have the most up-to-date information. And I'd say one of the biggest benefits is that it's a central repository for all this institutional knowledge that's in the heads and notes of your crews and experienced people. Those people aren't going to be with the city forever, and this is a great central repository for that.
Let's say, let's put it into a perspective of a homeowner.
Yeah.
Say there's a problem at a home, they get a call in. How would they use this map in that case if they've got an issue and an address or something? How would it come into play?
So in the most basic form, it would just be that the crews who are closest, nearest by, can, while they're out there, do a search on that particular address as they're heading over that way. When they arrive, they'll have the full layout and picture of that property. They'll also have history, so they'll know if this is a place that they've been to before, so they'll know where the curb stop is, they'll know what the maintenance history has been, which is good for that response right then, but that maintenance history is also good for preventing things. So we can, the city can then be more proactive and start to see trends with infrastructure and failures.
And I think basically just being able to identify where we have our distribution lines is very helpful.
Right.
Because we sometimes find them in places where we're digging that we don't know they're there.
And you might waste a lot of time not knowing where things are. This way, you'll have it...
And I'd also say that'd be very helpful. It's very helpful for developers or whoever may be wanting to develop the facility to be able to look at our GIS and say, well, they have available sewer and water at that location, which makes it convenient and easy and much more effective on doing a development. So there's a lot of different benefits, but one of the main things is us having the knowledge of where everything is located is key.
Now, will this go all the way to the end user's property?
It will be the main line features. So you'll see the taps and the things that are connecting to the main line, but it doesn't necessarily show the mapping of the lateral or the water service up to the, all the private infrastructure. It will show everything owned by the city.
But doesn't the city own all the way to the meter?
They own everything up to the right-of-way.
Okay. All right.
Like a water meter pit?
Yeah.
That's like right behind the curb, that's actually in the right-of-way. Typically, I'm not saying in all occasions, but typically, the back of sidewalk is outside of right-of-way. So if the meter pit or curb stop, per se, lands in between the back of curb to the, or the back of curb or between there and the back of sidewalk, it's in the right-of-way. So we own everything that's up to that point.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Our electric system, that's on the GIS, right? Who did that for us?
We did that all in-house.
So why couldn't we do this in-house?
Given the scope of how many structures there are and, you know, the underground utilities, we're constantly repairing water mains and things of that nature, it's kind of out of our scope to take this on ourselves. We don't have the manpower. We don't have, you know, we've got other things that we have to concentrate our time on, so that's why we had decided to go and have EMH&amp;T perform this for us.
Do you have any idea how many data points we have? Is that part of this whole thing to figure that out?
Yeah, we'll get points. We'll touch points on just about every structure we have. So you've got to figure, just for example, there's over 1,250 fire hydrants. So we'll get X and Y data on that, and all the information that we can gather about that point, case in point, would be the age of the fire hydrant, the type of fire hydrant it is, whether the fire hydrant is a drainer or non-drainer, you know, and then you got, we got over almost 1,100 valves. We've got 1,200 watch valves. So there's thousands of points that we will be getting through this eventually.
Okay.
And each one of those points, like I said, you know, each one of those has got a value added to them. It's got information that when we pull that up on our tablet or our computer, we'll be able to access that before we even go out in the field. We'll know exactly what kind of fire hydrant it is. We'll know exactly if that valve is a four-inch valve by how many revolutions it is to open it or close it. So it's, I mean, we will, you know, we'll know all that at our fingertips.
Whose job is it going to be to put all the history in?
Well, I'll have to talk to Derek, and I'm about to laugh at the Mohicans when it comes to the water distribution system, so...
I was just wondering.
I'll have to talk to Derek and his staff, and we'll put it all together and make it happen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, it's exciting to talk about all of this, and just recently, the commission met at the new water treatment plant, which will soon be open the end of spring. So it's exciting to see how all of this ties together and to see where we'll be in a year, two years from now with a much better system for our city. So thank you all for your good work. We do appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Do we have any comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call for this resolution?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye. Okay, resolution number R-122-16 passes. And now we move to resolution number R-123-16.
A resolution, excuse me, authorizing the transfer and conveyance of Miami and Erie Canal land to the city of Pickwa.
Mr. Summer will provide the staff report.
Good evening. Thank you. This resolution before you is going to make life a whole lot easier for a whole lot of people. As you know, currently, the city is in a master lease agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the former Miami Erie Canal land. This resolution will transfer that property to the city of Pickwa. So what happens currently is we have a sublease with ODNR, and for properties that are along the canalway, many of those, over the years, have been built on top of canal land. So when that property owner goes to sell the property and a title search is done, they cannot proceed with their transaction because they don't own a sliver of the land that they're building is sitting on. So what we then have to do, then do, is go to the state to request their approval, and it is a cumbersome process for us, for state staff, and for the property owners themselves. So the transfer of this land essentially cleans that up. The state is not interested in being in the lease business. We are not interested in being the lease business. So over time, what this, taking ownership of this land will allow us to do is to sell those pieces of land to the property owners where their property infringes upon the canalway, and then allows us the flexibility to determine how the canal land is used in the future. So for planning purposes, for growth and development, for opportunities for recreation in the future, this provides the control to the city of Pickwa to determine how those properties are used.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Justin, a lot of other communities are along the canal. Are they having these same issues? And what are they doing? Or are we setting a precedent? Or are they doing other things to deal with the canal leases?
Once again, we are a leader. So we've been proactive, and the reality is, we've had a couple of issues where property owners have tried to sell, and the transaction was slowed up because of the issue with the land being on the canal. So the state knew that, that we had worked through those issues with them, and they know that they have these leases coming up. They're 100-year leases, so it's up in 2026. There are other communities that are going to have to address the same issue, and we were in agreement to be the guinea pig, really. So we are setting the precedent for other communities to follow.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, one of the first things that we do, will it be to find all the places that have part of their building on canal lease land?
We're not going to...
And get that sold to them?
We'll deal with those as they come up. So as the, as those transactions occur, that's the appropriate time to deal with that from our point of view. Now, if the property owner wants to come to us before a transaction and go ahead and purchase that, absolutely, we'll address that. But, you know, for the most part, we know who, which properties those are, who we have lease agreements with currently, so we can be proactive about that. Ultimately, it's really up to the property owner at what point in time it makes sense for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? If not, I will entertain a motion on this resolution.
Move to adopt resolution R-123-16.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye. Okay, resolution number R-123-16 passes. And now we have resolution number R-124-16.
A resolution authorizing purchase orders to Chemical Services Incorporated, Greer Line Company, Air Products and Chemicals Incorporated, Kenamar Water Solutions Incorporated, Sterling Water Technologies LLC, Univar USA Incorporated, and the city of Dayton for the 2017 purchase of various water treatment chemicals.
Mr. Jennings will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This is just yearly business that we have to do that allow us to purchase chemicals for water treatment for 2017. It was a little bit of a challenge this year as we're looking to move out of the old facility and into the new facility, so it just kind of gave us a challenge on the amount of chemicals that we would need as we go into the new building because we are using some new chemicals in that facility. But with a special thanks to Mrs. Yana, purchasing agent, she did a great job this year. All our bids came in, and we feel very happy with the bids that we did receive. I think we just saw maybe just a little bit over 5% on one of the chemicals. All the rest were under that, or even a couple came in less than what they were last year. Some of the new chemicals we are using were a little bit tough to bid or to kind of guess where we were going to be with those because we've never used them before. So we did reach out to suppliers for some estimates, and we did come fairly close on those with our budgeting. Overall, we're at $369,713 for 2017, and this is just over about a $17,000 increase from 2016. So we feel like we did pretty good this year with our bids.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? When we were at the new water treatment plant, and you talked about having the facility to hold more chemicals rather than having to get chemicals in small amounts, will that also save money?
Yes, it does. If you can, some of the ball chemicals, if you can, you know, if you can only get 1,000 gallons in a truckload at a time as opposed to 4,000 gallons, you're going to pay more. The big one that we're seeing with that is our liquid carbon dioxide. If you remember, last year, we had a huge increase in that because we have a very small vessel, and the trucks that come in are 25-ton, and we can only, our vessel's only six-ton that we currently have. So we have to pay a premium to get that. Well, at the new plant, we'll have a full 26-ton vessel that'll hold a full truckload when it comes in, so we won't have anything to worry about there.
That's good for cost saving. Thank you.
The hydrofluoric acid, is that fluoride?
Yes, sir.
Do you guys test that before you put it in our water?
We check that every day to make sure that we're putting in the right amount. Yes.
No, I'm not talking about the right amount. I'm talking about the chemical makeup of it.
We check the chem, no, we do not. We get the specs from the company, and when we put it in, we know what we have, what's a certain percentage of fluoride that's in there, and then we just add that in. We don't pre-check really any of our chemicals. We have specs from the company that they have to abide by AWWA standards, and that's part of our bid process, that their chemical has to approve by those standards.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Questions or comments from the public? If not, I will entertain a motion on this resolution.
Move to adopt resolution R-124-16.
Second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye. Okay, resolution number R-124-16 passes. And it is time for public comment. For those that are watching on TV, I want to let you know there is not any public in the room at this time, so I am assuming that we will not have any public comment. We move on to our city manager's report.
Thank you very much. We just received notification of a $21,300 grant award from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to renovate the restrooms at Moat Park Recreation Center, to make them handicap accessible. I want to thank Nikki Reese, who's in the audience tonight, for writing that grant and helping get that. We were also just notified that the city of Pickwa ranks number one in the nation for gold medals received from the Let's Move program, which involves over 500 municipalities throughout the U.S. Again, that's a Nikki Reese program, so she's done outstanding from that. Yesterday was our employee great chili cook-off, and I wanted to congratulate the police department, the detective division for being the overall winner by popular vote. Our clerk, Becky Cool, took the manager, mayor's award for the best table decorations, and the finance department was the people's choice winner because of their great desserts. So we had some, we had great chili and a wide variety of types of chili, and some of it was extremely hot.
Yeah.
And several people suffered because of that. It was good, so we enjoyed it. Just like to remind everyone that there are two city charter amendments on the ballot for Tuesday's election, so you need to get out and vote and make sure that you vote on these amendment items of your preference. So it's all I have tonight unless anybody has any questions.
Yeah, do you know when we're going to start picking up leaves?
Started this week.
Started this week?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So they were running tests last week to make sure of all equipment, but it was in full operation this week.
Good. Okay, I haven't seen them yet, so take your word for it.
They're around somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Why don't we start down with Commissioner Vogt? Do you have any comments?
None, none tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
None tonight.
Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Terry?
I have to shout out a greeting to Julia.
All right.
This is going to be the last time, maybe.
All right. I do have a couple of things I want to mention. Andy Mays, who is a senior at Pickwa High School and is one of our cross-country runners, is going to state this Saturday, so we wish him good luck, and we give thanks for the wonderful talents that Andy has and the ways that he does Pickwa proud. So we are cheering Andy on as he goes to state this Saturday. So, we are cheering Andy on as he goes to state this Saturday. Also, as our city manager said, just a reminder that next Tuesday is the day to vote. It is a wonderful right that we have as citizens, so I encourage everyone to go out and make sure that you do exercise the right that was fought for all of us to have. So, there is nothing else at this time. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved. Second.
Okay. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh. I need to say why we're moving to executive session. I need to have a roll call. Okay, well, before that, we are moving to executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of the city manager. And this is actually Gary's annual review is what we're doing, so let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.